Chair Charlie Shear.
Here.
Vice Chair Brett Evans.
Here.
Spence Redwine.
Here.
Mary Carum.
Here.
And Susan Arthur.
Here.
Welcome, everybody, to the September eighth meeting of the Denison Planning and Zoning Commission. Just a little housekeeping, I'd like to give you rules here. We are a recommending body, and with the exception of site plans and plats, which our decision is final, all other cases will be passed on to City Council for their final approval, which would be in their next, their next meeting, which would be the twenty-first of September. Thank you, sir. That being said, this morning, our first order of business will be to approve the minutes from our August twenty-fifth meeting. Any errors, omissions, additions to the meeting, to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to. I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion? A second. Second by Mr. Redwine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed none. Okay. All right, individual items here. It looks like we're going straight to public hearings this morning. So what I'm gonna do is, if you're here to speak for or against a particular case, we're gonna give you the opportunity to come forward to, to address the commission. I would ask that you please give us your address for the record, name and address for the record. And that being said, Mr. Medina, we will go into item four A.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on the replat of part of lots one and two, block nine of the J.P. Dumas addition. It's case number twenty twenty dash zero six five MP. The reason it's MP, we initially wanted to consider this a minor plat and approve this administratively. This is somewhat routine. However, our code states, and state laws identifies that if we have to extend any public utilities or facilities, then we can't call it a minor plat. It's, it has to go through this commission with a public hearing. So the applicant is requesting to plat the partial lots into one lot in order to build a home. They've submitted their application material to build a permit, or to pull a permit for the new construction. Here is the lot here in the center. At some point in time, these lots were broken up into pieces, which is why it's part of lots one and two of the same block. Public utilities, I believe it's water, will need to run off of Day Street and come down south to serve this lot on Travis. Here's an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's mostly built out with other single-family residences. It's zoned, two-family duplex, and they're wanting to pursue a new single-family housing unit there. Here's the zoning. We recommended approval, and I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Okay, has, has Public Works determined where the water sewer is?
Yes, it's along Day Street to the north, and the city is going to be extending that for the applicant.
Are they gonna extend it down Travis? Is that what the plan is?
Yes, sir.
Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I'm just curious that on any of those others where there's, it looks like they're building, what they'll be doing will probably face Travis. There's, there are no alleys anywhere in that whole block, are there? There's no rear access at all?
None of that, no.
So everything.
There's an alley to the south of that, of that, where that house is. That's an alley used.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's an alley to the south, between Munson and Day. You can kinda see that, that line, maybe this, you see it better right here, that gap in the center.
So I'm just thinking that one piece in the middle wouldn't have any, any alley access unless they had an agreement with their neighbors.
That's correct. The only access to this property is gonna be off of Travis.
Okay. Not a problem, I'm just curious.
Okay, no, no questions for staff? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the replat of part of lots one and two, block nine of the J.P. Dumas addition.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Who's seconding it?
Me.
Mr. Ed, right? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed none, motion carries. Okay, let's go to, uh, let's see now, we are going to, it's all of our public hearing, isn't it?
We have our zoning ordinance.
We're going to staff update. Is this still public hearing?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so this, this is also a public hearing.
Okay.
All right, this is item four A. It's actually supposed to be four B. So four B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on amendments to the zoning ordinance, chapter twenty-eight, updating section twenty-eight point four eight A, a residential infill overlay district. Everything within chapter twenty-eight, we're gonna be, not twenty-eight, but the infill overlay district section, we're gonna be touching on. So as you recall, last meeting, we kinda went over some preliminary ideas and discussion of the direction we wanna go in with our infill ordinance. Working with the city manager and our local builders, we've come up with some ideas on paper, which we think are gonna help to improve flexibility with the infill, with development with the infill, as well as helping to preserve some of that character in those pre-existing neighborhoods. The proposed amendments consist of changes to lot dimension minimums, setback requirements, parking requirements, structure size requirements, all allowing for higher density. A front facade diversity requirement is also being proposed. So we'll get into the details here in a second, but I just wanna give you a brief rundown. This is just the, this is the overlay as it exists today, outlined. And here's another image as well. I've outlined it in red. I know it's a little difficult to see, but I wanted to give some examples of precisely where we're talking about. So, to run through some of these changes here, one of the big items is we're proposing to allow up to quadplexes to be constructed in any of the residentially zoned base layers that exist, whether it's two-family duplex, whether it's single-family, or whether it's multifamily. The developer would still need to meet the parking requirements. They would still need to meet their setback requirements. This just provides them flexibility to kind of move with the market and adapt as needed if there's a need for duplexes, instead of having to come through and rezone every time. If you're within this boundary, you have that, that capacity to do so, if you can make the lot work for you. So moving down, number two, the front yard setbacks. We're proposing some flexibility, or requesting some flexibility there. What we've noticed is in our infill, here's, here's an example of this, where requiring a twenty or twenty-five foot standard setback on the front proposes, or potentially creates a challenge with the visual aesthetics of the neighborhood design. So this lot here, we went out and measured it. This is on Main Street, further down west. This is about, at least around fifteen feet, front setback. Now, there's a vacant lot directly to the west. As opposed to being concerned with a twenty or twenty-five foot setback, we're stating in here to allow flexibility, simply conform with what's already on the neighborhood. Provide consistency lined up with what's there, instead of just holding into a hard number and then having to get a variance. Now, we are keeping the five yard setbacks on the sides. That's a building code concern with fire, with fire code. There's gotta be at least ten-foot distance between each house, so we need to, we'd like to stay holding to that five, five feet setback on the sides. For parking, as we mentioned earlier, we're gonna be trying to encourage more duplexes and quadplexes. We're proposing one parking space per bedroom unit, not to exceed two. So that way, we're not flooding the area with excess parking, requiring too much parking, but still ensuring that there's gonna be adequate parking for whatever you're building. We don't want you popping down a quadplex and you have nowhere to park, and then now we got traffic everywhere. Try to be mindful of that. At the very end, you'll see section twenty-eight forty-eight A point five, special requirements. In here are the other two big items, which I think are important to discuss, which is the allowance of a thirty percent variability to size of lots and structures as well. Yeah, so that includes the dimensions. So right now, our requirement is a fifty by one hundred size lot. While we wanna try and shoot for that fifty by one hundred, we wanna allow the developer to go down to a minimum of thirty-five foot wide, if they need to, or seventy foot deep, if they need to, as well as the, instead of requiring strictly five thousand square foot lot, square foot lot, lot size, you'll be permitted to go down to thirty-five hundred. Again, you still have to meet your setbacks and your parking requirements.
Hey, Bill, uh, since we're on this section right here, one of the things that I noticed that was in, in the, in the report that we discussed in the meeting, that we are going to allow, if you notice it, this thirty percent covers setbacks as well as it covers the gross area. And I don't think we got to it yet, but you're gonna notice that we decreased, decreased the nine hundred square feet, or nine hundred and fifty square feet, whatever it was, down to six hundred and fifty square feet as a, as a minimum square footage. Now, if we're doing a tiny house, they have that flexibility of decreasing that down thirty percent. So you can see that's gonna take it down to where it's roughly the same size as a new car garage. But what we discussed on the, on the tiny houses, and that I think probably needs to be added to, to our report, or to the ordinances, that any tiny house that's gonna be constructed, the, the plating process, as far as the replat, the size of the lots, as well as the, the, the house itself. Now, we can't govern materials, but, um, we're looking at, if you wanted to build a tiny house on a twenty, on a fifty-foot lot, then you're gonna have two twenty-five-foot wide lots. We still have to maintain the five foot, so that means we're gonna have a fifteen-foot wide structure.
Right.
Okay? So I think what we decided in the meeting Friday, that any tiny house, we're not gonna say no to them in the infill, but if you wanna build a tiny house, then it has to come through Planning and Zoning for approval on any tiny house. Now, if they wanted to take, like, some of these lots now, you know, we're, capability of taking them. I know we've got one lot that I'm working with a client on that's a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and thirty feet. So we, we're splitting that into three lots.
Or take two lots and split it into.
Right, yeah. So if you've got a hundred-foot wide lot, you can, you can split that into two.
That's not in this, is it?
Huh?
That's not part of this, though, right?
On the special requirements?
Well, no, I mean, as far as the, the house sizing, I don't think, is that part of, that's not part of this zoning changes?
It's in there.
So we have, we have language in here, and, and maybe this is something we can add to help clarify as well, is deviations or variances greater than that thirty percent flexibility on, under special requirements? Has to be approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. So if you're wanting to go, as Charlie said, if you're wanting to go down to twenty-five square foot width, you know, that plat would need to come through this body for approval.
Well, yeah, and, and I, I think we, we said we wanted to, we wanted to see the actual plan itself. We wanna see the concept of what you have planned for this tiny house.
So the plat and the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and I have something on here, too, which maybe this'll better capture. You know, I'm, I'm saying square feet, anything smaller than a six hundred and fifty square foot house must be approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that what you're looking for, too, Charlie?
Well, I guess you could put it that way.
'Cause that's not in the ordinance now, but we can get that before it goes to council.
Wouldn't that be, like, basically a variance if it's less than six?
Yeah, it kinda, it kinda would be.
Which is a variance anyway, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think on the, on the replat, it'll have to come through here anyway. So if they're gonna replat that, you know, into twenty-five-foot lots, it's gonna come before us anyway on the replat. But, um, it'd be nice if, if, uh, on a variance case, if that's what we, if that's what it winds up being, that we have a site plan and some, just like we would on a commercial project, where we got site plan and some, some elevation drawings of, of this is what it's gonna look like when they, when they bring it in.
Yeah, I agree, and, you know, I can work up some, like a, maybe a sentence or two, just to kinda attach to that section, just so it's all clear that the whole package needs to come through.
What we don't want is just somebody to come in there and, and build a, you know, fifteen-foot wide, about, you know, thirty-foot rectangle and look like a garage. You know, that's what we don't think we'll want. So whatever they design is gonna have to architecturally complement the rest of the, of the residences in the, in the district.
Absolutely.
So, I, I mean, I, that's my opinion. I, you guys can step in.
I agree.
That would prevent some.
Yeah.
And, and this allows a pathway to do a tiny home or a smaller project with at least enough oversight to get us started and kinda see how these projects work out.
We're not opposed to the tiny houses at all. I don't think that, I don't think anybody's opposed to that. But we have to be careful because, um, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with a fifteen-foot wide structure, there's not a whole lot you can do architecturally with that, so you're gonna have to be a little bit creative.
Right.
Um, anyway, so, okay, let's move on.
Okay, the, the last one here is the architectural diversity section. How we have it written right now is we would require separation of seven new construction homes before you could start using the same elevation plan. Changes in paint, color, siding texture, mirrored elevations are not considered changes to the architectural elevation design. And one of the things Judd wanted me to, to pose to you is to have a discussion of if that's gonna be sufficient, sufficient language to say, well, is that enough to really encourage or mandate that architectural diversity?
Every egg home?
Yes. 'Cause it, but that doesn't say that, I guess, in this part, right, about how, about the number of homes?
Uh, I think if you look over special requirements, the very last one down there.
This must have been updated.
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say. It says it in the.
Yeah, it says it in the, in the summary, but it doesn't say it in the actual ordinance.
Yeah, it's within the same block. Sorry, we made some last-minute changes. So right now, we're saying you can't use more than, the elevation changes.
So just within the same block, it doesn't matter the number of.
Yeah.
Well, that's, and it, the numbers would work out that way, because a block is eight, is eight to twelve houses, right?
Yeah. So I'll get that cleaned up before it goes to.
And mirrored elevations. We would have negated the problem on floor, right, if this was. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And by mirrored elevations, I mean.
Which is what we're trying to do anyway. Yeah. Yeah, mirrored would be if the garage.
The door, oh, the doors on the side versus.
You flip it to the left, kinda, yeah, so.
It's still the same, but it's.
Right.
Is that considered a different elevation?
No, it's.
So I, um, I have a, I have one that's gonna be admired and seers, okay? Their investment properties, so they are the same floor plan. Uh, one of which has got gables on the front, it's kind of a Donald May's looking kind of house. Then the one next to it is kind of a full hip roof, kind of a prairie style, but the roof structures are different on them. So, uh, even though it's the same footprint, we're changing up the, the, the roof on it. And different, you know, different windows are different in each one of them. The, you know, you've got horizontal siding, board and bath siding, and, yeah, so we're, we're changing those elevations up. So that even though they are the same footprint.
So how would we put something like that into words? My thinking is that your roofline and your windows are what seem to define the change in elevation more, more than the floor plan inside. I mean, you're not even gonna see that. So the change in elevation from the outside is largely defined by the kinds of things you're talking about. Gable windows and things like that. So my only comment with it is we're looking at, uh, the negative side of, instead of the positive changes that need to take place. So, uh, if you could put something to the effect that difference in window design, roof design, qualify for changes in elevation.
Okay.
You know, you've got, you could use height articulation, uh, you know, horizontal articulation, structural changes in, in roof design.
So we're saying window, roof, structural height design.
Yeah.
How do you?
Yep, yep.
The approach.
The approach.
So how's this, I guess, 'cause you have to submit it.
I woke up last night thinking about that, as a matter of fact. Who's gonna police this?
How is that gonna come about, like, as far as to know?
So whenever we get a housing permit in, for example, I had, working with a developer right now, they're looking at doing about eight homes or seven homes in the infill. Whenever I have a plat come through or permits come through like that, I'm gonna make sure to keep an eye on that. I'll probably create a spreadsheet to ensure that we can track where the new homes are going in, and I can just take a look at and see if the elevations are gonna be changed.
Does every residential permit come through you before it's approved?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you can take that site plan, that lot and block and that address, and you can plug it in, and all the new houses that have been built around it, you can, you can see it.
Yeah.
Do y'all have record of plans? I know we turn them in online now, so y'all have record of everything that's been done, right?
Yes, sir.
Pull that plan up and look at that particular lot and block and see what.
Yeah, so let's say you have a particular builder come in, they're wanting to do House A, right? And then they wait a month or two, I approve it, I approve it, right? They made, they wait a month or two and wanna build the exact same floor plan right next to the house they just built. Well, I'm gonna know, I just approved this house right here, because I'm tracking it, and I can pull up my map and look at all the addresses. If I want to, I can even go back several years and pull those elevations and review it. And let's say it's the same house, I'm just gonna pick up a call, pick up the phone and say, "Hey, developer X, Y, and Z, we need some changes here." And I'll meet with them and talk with them about what the expectations are.
Well, I just wondered, especially like where you have like this, where you, where it's, you know, one lot, but they did one further down, but it may have been last year, but going to turn around, is how is that gonna trigger? Okay, this needs to be checked. Obviously, if they're turning in five lots at once, that's, that's a little easier to, to know about. It's just more, I guess, on the, kind of the one-off deal where they've already, you know, maybe they've already done one on that, that block, or somebody else has, and they're just gonna, you know, use the same.
Yeah, I'll be working with Felicia on identifying a clear plan to help identify some of those one-off houses that are gonna be coming in. But it's really just gonna be a matter of internal mechanisms on my end, making sure that we're administering this to the standards we need to.
Okay. Do you think there's any reason for us to extend this into the, into, uh, the SF seven and a half districts?
Um, I would say so. I think a good start right now would be the residential infills. But depending on maybe the feedback that we get from the community and the builders, if there's some.
I can tell you right now that the community's not gonna, you're not gonna get any feedback from them, because they don't give a rip. But, um, builders are gonna scream bloody murder about it, some will. But that's just the way it is.
Well, most of the, I mean, most of the time you have new, I mean, there's not too many infills seven point five that are.
Well, there's not, but, uh, your volume builders, you know, you gotta watch some of them, because they'll come in, man. They're just, they'll just, they'll stack them up. You know, now, the higher-end guys, which I think is what we have right now. But, um, I won't call any names, but I think we have one builder that is considering coming in, that, uh, I've worked with them in the past, and they don't have a problem building the same one next door to another. They just sell it.
I think we, we denied a request back there for one that would have been like that.
And, um, now, Tom Johnson's development out there is architecturally held pretty tight with the restrictions and the coverage, so.
Things like that usually address that way.
Yeah.
But if you just throw up, you know, you've got one smaller.
So, right now, the, the public hearing was noticed for, and I agree with you, I think we definitely need to go in that direction.
Yeah.
We can hold a separate public hearing, I just got a notice in the paper, and do the same thing we did this time. If that's a change you wanna make, we already have the language.
Before we do that, we just need to do a little research to determine if we're having a problem in the seven point five districts. We may not be having a problem. If we're not, then there's no reason to address it.
I think that, based on the anticipated growth we're about to have, or that we're starting to see, it could be a benefit to get ahead of it before it does become a problem. So, this, if you look here, the yellow to the left, that's all basically seven five. That's outside the infill, where if they wanna do, they could stick the same floor plan in the whole block.
Now, there are some areas of town that are outside the SF five, that are seven point five, that are still kinda in those infill type subdivisions, to where there are lots available, and they can go in there and, they could do it in there, you know?
I think, it seems like what I, I hear is that that's typical of what happened to the enormous growth we had in Orange County back in the fifties. And I don't think that the individual builders, like we have at Gettysburg Village, are going to be what we're looking at. I think it's when somebody buys a large parcel of land and wants to put in what we call track houses.
And that's what we're seeing. We're, we're seeing those guys starting to come in.
Well, and so that's, so how do you, maybe if there's some kind of prepared ordinance, so that if we have a situation like that, somebody buys, say, two hundred acres, and they wanna do a development, that there's certain restrictions that have to go into that. They might have a, maybe it doesn't have to go into this, it's in a separate, separate ordinance, that within those developments, there has to be a certain amount of change within each elevation.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and this could serve as a precedent for that as well, whenever we're at that, at that point.
Yeah, um, most of the new developments that I work in, the metroplex, most of those cities do have the repetition ordinance that does apply to all the districts. You know, it's not a problem in the, in the bigger, you know, lots and the more expensive houses. It's not a problem.
Some of them you might have to look at, 'cause they're different, 'cause they're not necessarily, they're not, they're not blocks like you would have in your.
Yeah, well, some places.
They don't necessarily, they're all like part of one street.
It's not necessarily a.
Well, then sometimes those developments are not just one builder either. You go in and they, and the builders get to bid on the lots, and they, if they get one, then they get to pick their favorite lot.
There's some different considerations.
Yeah, but then you, you've got the differences built into the construction because of different contractors.
Well, I'm getting us off track this morning. I mean, we're basically, this, this, we need to hit this out this morning, but we'll deal with that, with the seven point fives in the future. I'm sorry to get us off on a rapid chase there.
Bill, I have. It's good to get us thinking about.
All good points.
I have one, a question on this one. On that same section up there, B and C that were marked out, are those moved somewhere else?
Yeah, so.
Like the RVs and motorhomes, et cetera, and open storage?
Where are you, Brett?
On that same section we were looking at, that twenty-eight forty-eight A five?
Special requirements.
The special requirements. Just that B and C there marked out, I was wondering.
Those are found in other sections of the ordinance. We can still enforce that, and we plan on enforcing it.
Okay.
Our city manager had put that in there, B and C, as an addition, and then we realized that since they're existing, we don't need to add it again.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's already a requirement.
Right, okay.
And we're enforcing that throughout the city.
Right.
That didn't get ten-four.
We're gonna go through all this, worry about it, and then all this.
Just snuck that in there.
Yeah. Um, I do have one question, um, and it pertains to accessory buildings. It just says that maximum lot coverage is fifty percent, including main buildings and accessory buildings. Do we not have a percentage requirement on the books that the accessory building can only be a certain percentage of the main structure?
Uh, I don't think it's in the infill. Um, I think, which one are you referring to? Are you checking the?
Well, I'm looking at number.
A three?
Three.
Yeah.
A four. It says maximum lot coverage. So we got a fifty percent coverage number, including main buildings and accessory buildings, okay? Most, most ordinances are written that the accessory building can only be a certain percentage of the main structure, because you. percentage of the main structure, because you could have a twelve-hundred-foot house and somebody go on the back of that thing and build a fifteen-hundred-foot accessory building.
Yeah, we don't have any, we don't have any requirements, yeah, and, and I don't have any requirements.
You don't have that kind of room, right?
Well, you do, because, I mean, those lots are a hundred and fifty foot deep.
Well, I get it, you're right.
Yeah.
A hundred-foot house, you know, a seven-hundred-foot house.
So, you know, I, I know, most of those lots, when we get through plating the houses on there, we've got seventy-five to eighty feet from the back of the house to the property line, well, the rear property setback's ten feet, so you, you've got sixty or seventy feet back there, you could actually, the way this is written, you could build an accessory building larger than the main residence.
You could, there, there's nothing right now that I found in our ordinance to prevent that from happening. That's something that we can add, though, I mean, I think that's, that's easily something that we can add to this ordinance.
The number's usually thirty-five or forty percent, is what the number usually is. So that if you've got a twelve-hundred-foot house, you can build a two-car garage basically in, in the back. But with the fact that we can't control building materials or anything anymore on, on anything, somebody could go back there and build a fifteen-hundred-foot metal building behind the house, and build a tiny home. Thing in the world we could do about it.
That's my shit. So let's see, I can, um, what percentage or, or how proportionate should it be, what is it?
Well, I mean, I think if you got forty percent, forty percent...
Forty percent of the main structure size, square footage.
Of the main structure.
Two thousand square foot house and give four hundred square foot.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Bill, right off the top of your head, do you know what the setback requirements are for the accessory buildings?
Uh, it's three feet off the rear, and I believe four on the sides, if not five on the sides, two.
Should be five.
Now, if it's adjacent to an alley or to an easement, that changes things a little bit, but that's generally the rules, about three feet off the rear, property line, and that's in a separate ordinance.
Don't we have a separate, separate ordinance on accessory buildings?
Do we?
Yeah, we have, but there's a section for carports, garages, and accessory buildings.
So would that be...
Now, we wouldn't be amending that section of the ordinance, we would just be amending or updating the infill, so everything in that right circle, around.
Okay. Anything else?
For a motion, I wanna add just, as a reminder real quick, since we've had added some changes, you know, we're looking for a forty percent maximum size compared to the total square footage of the existing home or the proposed home, and we could, we can fix that, the wording of that in our, in our ordinance.
Yeah, no, and under special requirements, item A addresses carports are allowed in the rear yard up to four hundred square feet in size, and metal sheds are allowed up to two hundred and forty square feet. So we've kind of made that a, we've kind of covered that metal building thing with that, but that still doesn't negate the fact that you could build a structure like the house, bigger than the house, so...
Yeah.
I still think we need a forty percent...
Maybe you add it right, maybe that's where you add that.
Yeah.
Is in that section, not in, not over on the maximum lock coverage, that gets hurt it, but it may not exceed, you know, you can have those, but, but the, you know, what structure might exceed...
Other structures may not exceed forty percent of the, of the main residence.
They'd be built up to there, but it may not exceed forty percent of the...
Yeah.
Residents.
Yeah.
I think that'd make more sense there.
Does that make sense, Bill?
Yeah, we'll put that in there. And then also for item five, minimum floor area, we discussed, the standard right now would be six hundred and fifty square feet as the minimum size, anything smaller than that, yeah, would require P and Z approval as well.
Now, are we gonna act on this this morning, or is this, are you gonna bring this back?
So you would act on this today unless you table it, recommend it to city council, and then I'll take this to city council with these changes for approval.
Okay.
So by the end of the month, you start, trying to force them to...
All right.
Six hundred and fifty, where it'd be six fifty.
Anybody have anything else they need to add or discuss on this day? You got all the changes?
I think so.
That's just those two changes, right?
Yeah, those are the only...
Forty percent, six fifty comes through us?
Yes, yeah, aside from the changes that we've, I've already proposed, those two, the forty percent, not to exceed forty percent of the square footage of the house, and then anything smaller than six hundred and fifty square feet, P and Z approval.
Good.
And then I need to clean up my staff report, but that's just administrative work.
All right, any other questions, staff? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, since this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the Dennis Municipal Code, chapter twenty-eight, um, with the changes noted as far as for what sections, uh, twenty-eight forty-eight A four, number, shoot, what was it? Uh, number five?
Right.
And then, and twenty-eight forty-eight A five, number A, about not exceeding forty percent, what was the other? Is that it?
Um, the other one would be that, uh, site plans and replats for tiny houses would come through P and Z for P and Z approval.
Right.
Less than six hundred and fifty square foot.
Yeah. Did you say that one?
Yeah, okay.
All right. I think that's it.
Second.
That was second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, motion, you opposed? Nope, motion carried. Um, is that it, Bill?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing no other business, and the fact that my granddaughter is down at my office waiting on me to get back down there, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion to the second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at ten forty-five AM.
Thank you, everyone.
I have one more addition.